Welcome to the special meeting for City Center. Uh, I'm Cherry Rollins. With me is John Orlico and Cindy Gilroy. And uh, I want to uh acknowledge that we're on treaty one territory, the home and traditional land of the Inishnabe. Ainenu, the Korta peoples, and the national homeland of Wibeti. Uh Winnipeg is gets its drinking water from Shore Lake. And um we get our electricity from the north, so we were very grateful for that. Uh because this is a special meeting, um we have no minutes to move. Um but I do want to apologize for being ill, uh which precipitated um the need for a special meeting. Um so really my apologies for that. Uh it was uh really unforeseeable. Um, we will go to the agenda. Um. And first up on the agenda is, oh, first we have delegations.
Right, yes.
Sorry.
Okay, so for delegations, first up we have Devin Gorilak for speaking on report two. I'm not sure if he's present.
Doctor Dahl.
Oh, is that me?
Uh Devin, are you present? I believe he's on Zoom.
Yes, I'm I'm on Zoom. I'm uh I'm listening here. Thank you.
Go ahead. You have ten minutes in the committee.
Oh, sorry, five.
Oh, five minutes already. Is your mic on, Mr. Garrelak?
Yes, sorry, I I was thought I was agenda point two. This is I'm just representing the client here for uh uh the twelve eighty Notre Dame. There's a Saint Theresa Point Gas Bar Development Proposal.
Okay.
That's your re-reviewing.
Yeah.
Just here to answer any questions should they arise. Um the project is pretty straightforward and the owner is is hoping to to gain approval to commence construction in the in the very near future.
Mr. Garrelak, if you're familiar, you have five minutes to present. Um if castlers have questions, so I've encouraged you to take your five minutes if you need them. If not, I don't see any questions.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I I don't need any uh.
Okay, perfect. We'll move on then. Our next delegation is Jesse Almaro.
Yes.
And Jesse Almaro will be speaking on three hundred Newmarket Boulevard. Is Jesse with us online?
Uh it it will be both Jesse and me, myself, Ray Wan of Ray Wan Architect. We're representing to develop a well development from Calgary. Proposing a six thousand square feet, single story CRU Commercial Rental Unit Building. Everything comply and in co- uh in compliance with the current zoning bylaw and the secondary plan P D O of the Bishop Grand and uh improvement. Uh, we have been working with the planning district. Uh, since our last meeting, we have received a positive support report. So we are looking for and approval to proceed with development permit and per- and building permit subsequently.
Yeah. Great. Thank you very much. And and gentlemen, my apologies uh for the necessity of this special meeting. I I want to apologize personally. Uh, if there's uh nothing further, we can move on.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much for joining us today. Anybody else?
Uh no, no, that concludes delegations.
Uh, Councilor.
Who I was one through seven inclusive.
Thank you. Uh so moved by Councilor Orlico and is one through seven, getting uh our those are items for platform role connect extension of time. Uh, construction waste diversions strategies, time limit, and a traffic study at intersection of York Avenue. Uh, so moved all of those in favor.
Aye.
That was carried unanimously. We'll come back for a hearing at ten thirty A M.
Just one thing I want to clarify, on item five.
All right.
Councilor Gilroy, uh would like to report.
Oh, great. Sorry, yeah. So yeah, so what? Yes, you raised question that.
We'll rescind item number five then.
Yeah.
No, no, it doesn't need to be rescinded. He just needs to know that it goes back to standing uh the standing policy of water and waste instead of this committee, right?
Okay, so we'll let the reflection of the record show that it is going to the Standing Policy Committee uh as opposed to council.
Uh yeah, on recommendation for the motion.
Right.
And so that's recommendation of motion, item agenda number five on our agenda regarding construction waste diversion.
That that would that would be amendment.
Um, it would be amended, so we will rescind it. All the question on item one to seven, just again with the exclusion of five, so moved by Councilor Orlico. Those in favor, that was carried unanimously, and we'll go into the amendment on item number five, so moved by uh Councilor Gilroy.
Yep.
The amendment as discussed, uh all those in favor.
Aye.
And that too is carried unanimously. And now we will move to adjournment until temporary.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, everybody.
Welcome back to the special meeting of City Center Community Committee for Thursday, July third. My name is Cherry Rollins. I would like to start with another act of contrition by saying I apologize for the special meeting and the need for it. Uh, uh, we will begin with the zoning agreement amendment two six nine River Avenue.
Okay. In accordance with the City of Winnipeg Charter and the Development Procedures bylaw, process the committee will follow is the applicant will be heard first, followed by those in support of the application. Next, those registered in opposition are heard, followed by those registered for information. Finally, the applicant makes a return to speak in rebuttal to comments made. However, no new information is permitted. Please note that when your name is called, it is your opportunity to speak. However, you are not obligated to do so. For a more in-depth overview of the public hearing process and other information pertaining to what happens before, during, and after a public hearing, please consult the City Clerk's Department website. Please note that all public hearings are recorded and will be part of the public record. Should you have any questions after after the hearings have concluded, please contact the City Clerk's Department. Okay, so item one is a zoning agreement amendment at two sixty nine River Avenue under file Z A A three slash twenty twenty five. Please note that communications were received in support of the matter, which have been distributed to all members of the committee. And I will turn this over to the planner.
Great, thank you. Uh the subject property is located on the north side of River Avenue in the River Osborne neighborhood of the Fort Rouge East Fort Gary Ward. The applicant is proposing to discharge existing zoning agreement uh that's caved on the title when the site was rezoned to RMFL in nineteen seventy nine. The current zoning agreement restricts the dwelling unit count to a hundred and ten dwelling units. And the applicant is proposing a hundred and forty seven unit residential development. Uh and sixty of those hundred and forty seven dwelling units uh will be deeply affordable units. The site is currently vacant. Uh it's fifty seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy three square feet in area and accessed by a front approach off of River Avenue. Surrounded land uses include multifamily dwelling uses to the east, south, and west, and the Cinnabon River to the north. Under complete community direction strategy two point oh, the site is within the established neighborhoods, mature communities policy area. In terms of collaboration, the applicant uh worked with the public service prior to the formal application process. And we support the zoning agreement amendment for the following reasons. The proposed hundred and forty seven dwelling unit reflects and meets recent bylaw amendments to the Osborne Village Neighborhood Secondary Plan. As well, the number of dwelling units typically relate closely to density and building height. And one of the major recent policy amendments in the plan was to provide a a new high density development along River Avenue that's east of Osborne Street. From a maximum of five stories to uh it may exceed eight stories with a sun shadow study. The proposal meets the plan in proposing a seven story uh building and ensures there's no or low impact of shadows cast on neighboring properties, parks, and streets. That concludes my summary. Have to answer any questions?
Any questions?
Okay.
Choice Hall, I forgot to introduce Black Moen and Dylan, that was who we doing. Um, who who I was to in addition to Councilor Orlico and who we are. Um, no questions of this structure already, you can move on.
Okay. Next, we'll have the applicant Jonathan Freed to speak on the matter.
What Michael?
Sure.
What? Do you have a quick job? I'm going to have a presentation just to share.
No, you didn't.
Very responsible. That's me. That's my huh? Uh, I don't think so. Is it true? Well, we just. Okay, cool.
Yeah. Okay. Good morning, everybody. Thanks for the opportunity to provide an overview of the project. Uh, my name is Michael Ott. I'm with Civil Architecture. Um, the project we're talking about is two six nine River. Prepared prepared a little slideshow just to inform everybody of the project. Hopefully, everybody can see. And thank you for the nice summary. So I'll try and keep it really brief and then open it up to questions. So um the property we're speaking about is two six nine River. Um, I won't duplicate what was said already, so it's actually a really quite a unique property. Um, it's a hidden island, I would say, in terms of we only have twenty five, twenty one feet of frontage that actually faces street uh front. The rest of it is surrounded by existing properties. That's all multifamily residential properties. Um, the property is currently zoned RMFL, as we had discussed, and we're trying to remove the caveat from, I believe we had said nineteen seventy nine. Um, and this property backs onto a Cinnabon River. We've already completed destabilization scope along the river. Um, and it's within walking distance of downtown and major bus routes. And um like I had said before, it backs onto a Cinnabon River. If I can find this. In terms of the proposed development, it was mentioned this is a one point three three acre site. Um, the building itself, we're looking at seven stories. It's a hundred and twenty, approximately a hundred and twenty five thousand square feet to support a range of housing projects. Um, the building is pet friendly, accessible, um, non-combustible construction, and as mentioned earlier, it's a hundred and forty seven units with forty one percent of those units being affordable. So we're talking about sixty additional affordable units. Um, so in this diagram, you can see this on the far right. I don't know if you can see the cursor is the only frontage. Uh this is our approach into the site. And like I said, we're surrounded by all multifamily. So we have three and four stories all along river, and then it stepped from five. We're actually seven stories and we have ten stories at twenty one Mayfair. Uh, moving along quickly. Uh, this is the access from river on the north southwest corner. We have access all the way around our site. Um, there's an existing eastment in the southeast corner that allows access onto Mayfair. And then we have an interior parcade on the north. Um, the red here is showing the primary entrance in the southwest corner, and then we have two egress pass on the east side of the building. Um, one thing to note is we have a large portion of landscape amenity space on the west side of the building that connects to the river itself. Uh, we also have indoor parking, or sorry, indoor bicycle parking spaces on the northwest corner. Um, in terms of amenities that are being offered within the building, um, we have a two-story volume or entrance in the southeast corner. Sorry, southwest corner. Um, there's a leasing office, a gym. Uh, as I had mentioned, this is secured landscape space on the west side. That includes um gas barbecue areas and fu- and a fire pit area. And then at the same time in the northeast corner, we have this landscape viewing space that overlooks the river itself. Um, this is a typical floor plate, uh so it's an L-shaped configuration with a slight return on the south or slight bump out on the southeast corner. Um, again, it's a hundred and forty seven units. It's primarily made up of one and two-story units. There's forty one percent affordable units, as I had said, sixty of those units. These units all range in size from five hundred square feet to just over, just under eleven hundred square feet. Um, something we tried to bring with all these units is either a Juliet or a balcony, so there is large glazing all along the, within the suites, and then all the suites themselves have in suite laundry. Uh, moving quickly, these were the elevations that were shared or submitted with the application. So here you can see um a large amount of glazing, combination of Juliettes and balconies. We have a two-story volume in the southwest corner that will become more apparent as I just share some images here. Um, I'm not sure how good you can see this, but here's the L-shaped configuration of the building. The uh access is off of Donald. In the southwest corner, you can see our one one approach. Um, and then the stepping of the buildings in terms of two six one, all the way to twenty one Mayfair. Mayfair that goes uh ten stories. Uh, I'm gonna share. This is a view from the southwest corner looking north. Again, it shows the approach, all the multifamily surrounding the existing property. Um, this is a view uh looking southeast, so here you can see all our river lots. Large exposure on the north, and we have full balconies all along the north as well. Um, this is an area looking south, so you can see the parking that's tucked away along the east. We do have parking underneath the building as well. And um the shadow studies, I won't go into great great detail. But um because we're on the north side with all the properties to the south, there's no adverse impact to surrounding buildings. Watch the cursor. Um, there's just a few renderings to help uh illustrate the approach. So this is uh coming up that approach from the south. This shows the two-story volume, a cutaway of that entrance. Uh, we do have the gym that is a one-story volume that pops out on the west side. And then we have access all around around the site uh underneath the building to the south and to parking to the east, and again, access under the building on the north. Um, this shows a view from the southeast side. Um, and here you can see that two-story volume cutaway, the play of balconies and Juliettes on the facade, and then the L configuration as well. And just to conclude, this is the view from the north, so here you can see these are all the river-facing lots. Um. Good timing.
Any questions, Councilors?
Uh, just uh, an announcementation. Question's more on construction. How are you gonna access the site? And uh how are you gonna access the site to construct? Uh, are you using the park?
So current currently right now, we're looking at two approaches. We're in discussion with the city on closing one lane on river. At the same time, we're looking at access from Mayfair as well. So.
On Mayfair?
That's correct.
All right, that's fine then. Uh, so you're not gonna be using the park on the other side to go.
That is not the intent.
Okay, that's good. How's it?
Looking further, Councilor? Thank you very much.
Okay. Next up in spot, we have Michael Ott registered to speak.
How was Michael?
Oh, sorry, on the phone. My apologies. Uh Jonathan Freed, if there's any words.
Come on up, Mister.
You're you're one of welcome to stay. If there's anyone else to register. Uh, you're you're. They have sit down their style when you even have as a team, so welcome.
I'm not gonna present them under the weather, but I'm here to address any questions. It's okay.
Have questions?
New crowd council will have some questions.
No, just uh totally off books here. Is this uh your company now? This uh, I don't think I've seen this before. You're uh.
Fair enough. Paying attention then.
No, I'm very, very much.
Yes.
Yeah, congratulations. I know you've been doing this for a while and now you have your own shingle up, so congratulations. That's it.
Okay. Um, and if nothing further, we'll save your voice. Yeah. Thank you.
Right on. You know, Ben.
Okay, that's it for those registered in support. Just checking the gallery to see if there's anyone else who wish to speak in support of the matter. I can note no one. Next up, we'll have opposition. Currently, we have no one registered in opposition. Just again, checking the gallery. No one to note. And lastly, for information, again, no one registered on file for uh for information, but at the gallery, and likewise, nothing. So now if there's any questions for the public service.
Yes, that's what our public, you had a.
Nope, I've answered.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, if not, uh we can move on.
There was just a bit of rebuttal. I'll chief through some for to save.
Oh, you can accept.
Um, for those of you, you are welcome to rebuttal. What you're.
Hit a question.
Just, I suggest uh have to be all.
Okay. Uh, see none, go ahead.
Right? I'll speak out on it.
Oh, I can do.
You do, you already.
I'm already there. Oh, sorry. I move that the reports of public service be taken as read.
All those in favor.
Aye.
That the received public representations be concluded.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Very nice.
I move that the recommendation of the Winnipeg Public Service be concurred in and forwarded to the Standing Paul, oh no, to the Executive Policy Committee via priority rezoning process. My supporting reasons are as it's a it's a nice project, uh really good uh infill project. Um, fits in well with the neighborhood and um, nope, other than that, it looks, it's a good project. Those most important reasons.
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Carry unanimously.
And that the public hearing with respect to this application be concluded.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Carry unanimously, but thanks.
Good. Please note that the committee has made a recommendation on this matter that will now proceed to council. No further representations are permitted on the subdivisionary zoning. All persons registered for the public hearing will receive notice when the matter is to be considered by council.
Okay, we'll move on to the next grade, which is the subdivision of zoning in sixty nine to seventy one, seventy two Maryland Street is combined hearing with the variance. Where sixty nine to seventy five. Sorry, it isn't a combined hearing.
Uh, this one will be combined hearing.
Yes, it is, sorry.
Yeah, I'll just do it.
Um.
I'll just verify.
Yeah.
Okay, so item two is a subdivision of zoning at sixty nine to seventy five Maryland Street under file D A S Z five slash two uh twenty twenty five. Uh, in accordance with the City of Winnipeg Charter and the Development Procedures bylaw, this is a combined hearing and the following item will also be heard at the same time, namely, item three is a variance at sixty nine sorry, sixty nine uh to seventy five Maryland Street under file D A V twenty uh two one two two five zero slash twenty twenty four V. And please note, communications were received in support of the, oh, sorry, excuse that. Uh, I'll just turn this over to the planners.
Of course, thank you. Uh, the site is located on the east side of Maryland Streets between Wolseley and Westminster Avenues in the West Broadway neighborhood of the Fort Rouge East Fort Gary Ward. It is in a mature community policy area of complete communities two point zero. It is currently zoned RMFM Residential Multifamily Medium District. Uh, and the site currently includes a gravel lot and three dwellings which are proposed to be demolished. The applicant is proposing subdividing and rezoning the site to the C M U Commercial Mixed Use District for the purpose of consolidating the lots and constructing a six-story building with fifteen hotel suites on the main floor and forty five dwelling units on the on the upper floors. The proposal includes sixteen parking stalls within an internal parking structure as well as an outdoor parking area and one car-share vehicle. In addition, the applicant has proposed twenty two indoor bicycle parking stalls. As part of the proposal, the applicant requires eleven variances. The variances enable reduced front yards to Maryland Street of five feet, front yard balcony projections of five feet, north and south side yards of six and a half feet, a lot area per dwelling unit of four hundred and eleven square feet instead of eight hundred square feet, insufficient street edge landscaping along Maryland Street, no guest parking spaces instead of five spaces, and insufficient buffering of a parking area located within twenty feet of a rear lot line adjacent to a residential district. The administration has recommended approval of all of the variances. There's no recommended zoning agreement or servicing agreement. Uh, the Urban Planning and Design Division recommends approval of the proposal because it's consistent with the policies in Complete Communities two point zero and our Winnipeg twenty forty five. That concludes my summary. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Uh, I have a question, but anybody?
Yeah.
Wanted to go ahead first, so Councilor Orlico, Councilor Gilroy.
The variance has stuck out there a little bit is the size. Can you explain the rationale for allowing uh seems to be pretty small units?
The the lot area for, yeah. Yeah, you know, I think the applicant would be better suited to speak to the 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 uh the unit size themselves because the lot area of in theory, uh the lot area variance is regulating how many units can go on the land.
Right.
Not the size of 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 each unit. But it is a significant variance, absolutely. So the rationale that was provided, so I'll just pull up the administrative report here. Uh, so the rationale for the density variance is that the property about Maryland Street of high volume transit serves arterial and it steps away from Sherbrooke Street where numerous shops and services existing within walking distance and where transit service is also provided. C C D F Complete Communities two point zero uh targets a minimum of fifty percent of all new dwelling units to be accommodated in the residential intensification target area outlined in section B one. Uh, this is the rationale provided in the report for the for the density variance. So I think uh.
Lot stuff around there.
Yeah, and so we have the density variance, so the lot area variance.
Yeah.
Exactly. The the thinking being that there's lots of amenities, there's there's high quality transit service. Uh, the this complete communities typically tries to steer the the highest densities to these these areas, and that was the rationale.
You're seeing in that neighborhood. Okay, thank you. Of course.
Just out out of curiosity, because this is the second time I'm getting uh now one of the hotel addition in it. Um, and so I'm just, when when people put an application in, how uh do they, does it have to have like a certain hotel status versus just um uh you know, those um, what is it called when you go Airbnb's? Like, are we, is this, I mean, I may not be a question I can also ask with the developer, but I just have have issues with um some of my buildings where they have lots of Airbnb's inside an apartment building. So just out of curiosity, when they're saying that this is for hotel, are we ensuring it's a hotel?
And not a not a short-term mental accommodation?
Yeah.
Yes, the the zoning bylaw does distinguish between short-term rental accommodations, Airbnb's uh and and hotel uses, and so the applicant would be required to 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 state which one they're uh what type of use it's going to be. And then they are regulated slightly differently through a bunch of different licensing regimens that go beyond the zoning bylaw. I can get you details on that. I don't have the the specifics uh licensing regimens.
Uh, that's fair as long as, so it's not like they can now go and use this for Airbnb because it's been, it's part of the zoning?
They I mean, I guess in in theory, they could convert a hotel to a short-term mental accommodation. I I need to, if they were to apply for uh through community services and through planning property and development.
Okay.
Uh, you could in theory do a conversion of a of a building. Uh, there would be a lot of details to that. I probably need about ten minutes to to figure out that process, and I can get that to you.
Yeah, that that that's that's probably fine. I know it's just, yeah, um, there's something we gotta start doing now that we're looking seeing more of these. I think it's a good thing if it's considered a hotel, at least people know and understand what they're getting with the hotel versus the the Airbnb, right?
Right.
So, okay, perfect. Thank you.
The adjacent building, all the buildings that will be next door. This is an example of a five foot variance.
Um.
Even what would be across the street.
Do you want to repeat the question for me once?
What? The examples on Maryland.
Hmm.
Is is there is a building down the street um is subject, is series of subject property?
Hmm.
Like on a corner of Dunburn. Um.
Right.
Right. Is this an example of the five that said um?
Like the existing building at the on the southwest corner of Dunburn and uh uh I will.
Yeah.
It looks like it's about give or take seven feet, sixes, between six and seven feet is what the the existing setback is. Bear in mind, I just, I did a a rough. We'll check that. The hospital has a
I would call that zero, because it's just right on the sidebar.
Are you talking about the the north side yard setback of the hospital? So the, oh, to Maryland.
On Maryland. It would be up and down the street on Maryland. You've got Shorty also right on the sidebar.
It's yeah, I mean, that I absolutely, that looks like about zero. Uh, our our mapping software, I view there, the aerial photography, it's not perfect in that sometimes there's a very slight deviation in it, but within a fairly small margin of error. So I I would agree that uh Shorty's has very close to a zero foot side uh front yard setback to Maryland. And, uh, and the the hospital also has about a zero foot setback to to Maryland.
So five feet would be the co-op. An example of five feet on would be the co-op. Down
Yeah.
Street, we're moving down the street now.
Y- yes, it's very similar.
Like that? Okay. No further questions?
Okay, I'll invite, uh, the applicant Leon Reimer to speak in support.
Thank you, Andrew Robinson, of course, of the hotel.
Okay, yes, we have Andrew on Zoom. Andrew, can you hear us? Perfect.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, Crystal.
Perfect. Okay. Hi, good morning. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to talk about this project. Um, we're very excited about increasing the density and developing one empty lot and improving the remainder. Um, Integra, Leon Reimer's there with you guys. Uh, Integra has a successful track record in developing, uh, seven-ten Westminster and, uh, other multiple city center and downtown conversion rehabilitation projects. Uh, so location. Sorry, can I share my screen? S. All right, everyone can see that?
Sometimes I get a good lie, but I think it's a good thing.
Oh.
There we go.
There we go. All right. Okay. So location, we're centered on Dunburn Place. Is it dead ends at Maryland, which features a row housing, um, row housing complex. They have commercial to the east along Sherbrook and seven-ten Westminster to the north, which also features a zero yard setback to Maryland uh, alongside unit access from the sidewalk. So, uh, seven-ten Westminster was also an Integra project. And, uh, definitely a great precedent for what we're trying to accomplish here. It's had zero vacancy for several years and the need for, uh, more units is very apparent, uh, to Integra. Um, building and program. So it is a six-story structure in alignment with C C D S two point oh, um, complete with nineteen underground parking stalls. Uh, the building is aligned with seven-ten Westminster to the north. Um, along Maryland, it features over forty percent finished ration uh, at level one hundred with lifted level one hundred Juliet balconies to increase security. Um, we also on the site plan have ample planting in between, uh, those those balconies. Uh, one of the variances is for insufficient, uh, street edge landscaping as because it'd be pretty tough to keep trees alive in that space, but we we can definitely, um, keep shrubs alive in there. So we do plan on having, uh, a bunch of greenery along Maryland. Um, go back to the facade here. So the level one hundred, uh, street front facade features high-quality wood look uh, that wraps the building on the north and south. Those are requests of, uh, city Winnipeg planners. Uh, we have commercial space at level one hundred. So, uh, I know there was a little conversation about the the use of the hotel and the intent is that these are fifteen short-stay furnished and serviced hotel units that are digitally managed. Um, we're seeing this emerge with success in other markets and it's one of the endorsed solutions by C C D S two point oh to activate the street frontage of the building. Um, so it's not, there's no intent for Airbnb. Uh, the level two hundred to six hundred features forty-five residential units of varying sizes, uh, twenty-one beds and twenty-five two beds. Um, I do believe that the, uh, question posed earlier was regarding, um, lot density. But as far as unit size, um, our smallest is at five hundred and twenty-two square feet, so very comfortable one bed. And our largest is at eight hundred and ninety-two square feet, so very comfortable two bed. So unit size themselves, uh, comfortable. We're not trying to squeeze in, uh, too much with, uh, too little space. Um, uh, we worked with, eh, the planner to provide a paver pathway on the north property line. Um, in between the subject property and seven-ten Westminster. Um, we have no issue identifying five guest stalls. That probably should have been done already. And, yeah, other than that, I'm here to answer any for, oh, sorry, I did want to touch on the density, uh, the lot, the unit per lot area. So, uh, I think a big precedent here is seven-ten Westminster and we're achieving a density uh, very similar to what they had on that property. I believe it was four hundred and thirty square feet, um, per unit. And, uh, C C D S, uh, two point oh actually uh, puts us in a higher density than R M F L would permit. So this this is why uh, the lot area per density, um, was agreed agreed upon and supported by city planning.
Want to conclude your presentation?
That concludes my presentation.
Okay, any questions? I have questions. Great. Um, you said no short-term rentals. Um, I don't see any difference in our policy between a digitally managed platform and a short-term rental. Why do you see this as different? What?
Sorry, I I I don't see difference in the policy. I see difference in the intent of what we're trying to deliver. Um, we're trying to deliver that that short-stay, um, cheaper alternative to to the hotels around the airports and down Main Street and, um, there, we're seeing in other markets these fully furnished units where you get a digital key card on your phone and that allows you to sign in to or access your room and they're very basic amenities. Uh, we're s- we're seeing great success with them. And so by all intents and purposes, they operate as a hotel. Um, having never stayed in Airbnb myself, uh, I associate Airbnb with, um, units and and people who own those units, um, and individual owners, but this is, you know, all all fifteen proposed hotel units are owned by the same uh, group and it'll be set up as a company. And so it's just, I don't see a difference in the policy, I see a difference in the intent.
So you're gonna be renting a hotel, so you'll be paying all the hotel association fees and stuff?
This is the intent, yes.
Yeah.
Uh, in terms of the setbacks, um, you know, this isn't a very big setback. You're considering bushes. My concern, of course, is, uh, making sure that that walkable transit-friendly neighborhood stays as such. Typically, as, uh, a local council concerned with that, I'm concerned with sidewalk space. So five-foot setback, not zero setback, um, is sort of the intent here. Bushes, however, impede when they are uncapped, given your commercial interests. I don't think that would be the case, but could you provide additional comfort, if any, on considerations with respect to the setback?
Absolutely. Um, so Integra Building Solutions also has a property management company. And so they self-care for all of their buildings and that's their intent here. And, uh, as we can s- we can see on seven-ten Westminster how they really activated the Maryland Street side with their, um, with their, uh, direct access to units. Um, this one's a little bit different. We're gonna focus on the landscaping, but with, uh, with their property management side, uh, I can assure you that the sidewalks are gonna be kept, uh, clear and free of shrub debris and growth.
All my questions, if anyone has a
Okay. And just gonna offer, uh, Leon Reimer, is there anything you'd like to speak in support?
Morning, thank you for your time.
Feel the vibe, Mr. President.
Um, yeah, we, um, developed the property just next door, seven-ten Westminster on the corner of Maryland Westminster, uh, probably five, five years ago now, and we had a lot of success with that building. Um, uh, the the comment about landscaping, uh, I appreciate that very much. Um, we have a unique business model in that, um, I own the general contracting company, I own the property, and I also own the management company that manages the property. And so we take a lot of pride in our design, um, process and we always consider our tenants and their needs. And we have a very close connection with them as we're running the management company as well. We care a lot about the appearance of our buildings. I think, um, looking at seven-ten Westminster shows that we care about the exterior appearance. We care, uh, about this community and this neighborhood. And so we have no desire to have shrubs growing out of control or anything like that. It doesn't, it doesn't help our business model, it doesn't help our tenants. We pride ourselves in zero vacancy because we offer good services and good buildings. And so I'd like to
Yeah.
add that. Sorry, if I have.
Okay.
Nope, sounds good. Thanks, thank you.
Okay, that's all we have for registered in support. Just looking to the gallery now, if there's anyone wishes to speak in support of the matter, who hasn't registered yet. No one to note. Okay, next we have opposition. No one has been registered in opposition. Again, to the gallery looking, if anyone wishes to speak. No one. And lastly now for for information, again, no one has registered for information, but again, the offer to the gallery, if there's anyone who wishes to speak for that. And no one, okay.
Okay, so, uh, there's an opportunity to ask, which is the administration? Uh, there's also an opportunity to rebut, if anyone would like. Um, what are your privileges? Absolutely not much today. Um,
Yeah.
Or, yeah. Oh, Lawman?
Really?
And can you add?
This?
Yeah.
Okay, I move that the report of public service be taken as read.
All of them.
Aye.
The receipt of public rep- the receipt of public representations be concluded.
All of them.
Aye.
But the recommendations of Winnipeg Public Service be concurred in and forwarded to the executive policy via priority rezoning process. The supporting reasons is this is creating more density, um. I think that it's it's important that they're upfront what they're gonna have, which is gonna be a hotel. Um, so they're very upfront about that. Um, and the design and the built of the building, uh, looks and feels like the the neighborhood and it's a good project. Those are the priorities.
I'm excited about the detailing of the wood. Uh, I'm always very concerned about pure, you know, white facade because of the neighborhood, but I think that that's already a good addition. So thank everyone, uh, for helping to do that. Uh, we have examples of, you know, the variances along the streets, um. I'll be cautiously optimistic on the business model. I do think that there's room for for reported. Um, I'm very supportive of all those in favor. Aye. Very unanimously.
And I move that the public hearing with respect to this application be concluded.
Okay, please note that the committee has made a recommendation on this matter that will now proceed to council. No further representations are permitted on the subdivision and rezoning. All persons registered for the public hearing wills will receive notice when the matter is to be considered by council. Okay.
So we'll move on to
Oh, just the comments, yeah.
Please, you want to vary them now?
No, sorry about that. Um, okay. Forgot about variants, sorry, everybody. Okay, here we go. Uh, I don't, the the report of the, uh, who would pick up service be taken as read?
All of them.
Aye.
That the receipt of the public representations being included.
On the day of the party.
Then according to subsection two-four-seven-three, that the city of Winnipeg Charter variance is consistent with Plan Winnipeg and the any applicable secondary plan.
Aye.
It does not create a substantial adverse effect of the amenities used safety and convenience of adjoining property in adjacent area, including areas separated from the property by a street or waterway and is a minimum modification of the zoning bylaw required to relieve the adverse effect of the zoning bylaw on the applicant's property and is compatible with the area in which the property to be affected is situated, and my supporting reasons are the same as before.
All of them.
Aye.
Okay, yes.
That the re- recommendation of the Winnipeg Public Service be concurred in.
Aye.
And that the public hearing with respect to this application be concluded.
All of them.
Okay, please note that the committee's decision with respect to this application may be appealed. Should you wish to appeal, information on how to do so will be included in the order issued. Well, sorry, in the order issued, which will be mailed to all persons registered.
Um, we'll move on to the subdivision of rezoning of thirty-two-one and thirteen-twenty-five Beaumont Street unless anyone needs to needs a break. Um, it's a combined hearing, too.
Okay.
Okay. Item four is a subdivision of rezoning at thirteen-twenty-one and thirteen-twenty-five Beaumont Street under file D A S Z thirty-nine slash twenty-two-four. Uh, in accordance with the city of Winnipeg Charter and the Developing Procedures Bylaw, this is a combined hearing and the following item will also be heard at the same time, namely, item five is a variance of thirteen-twenty-one Beaumont Street under file D A V one-three, one-six-three-zero-zero-one slash twenty-two-four D. Uh, and now I will give it over to the panel once more.
Thank you. Who, the property is located at the northwest corner of Beaumont Street and McGillbury Boulevard in the Beaumont neighborhood of the River Heights Fort Gary Ward. It is in a mature communities policy area of complete communities. It is currently zoned R M F S residential multifamily small district and is occupied by multiple townhouses. The applicant is proposing subdividing and rezoning the site to the R M U Residential Mixed Use District for the purpose of consolidating underlying lot lines and constructing in phases for multifamily buildings, two of which would include commercial units. In total, four hundred and thirty-one dwelling units are planned with approximately half expected to be affordable. The proposal includes two hundred and sixty-three parking stalls and one hundred and thirty bicycle stalls at the moment. As part of phase one of the development, the applicant is also proposing a childcare center within the commercial space. As part of the proposal, the applicant requires ten variances. The variances enable a reduced front yard of three feet to Beaumont Street for the existing parking drive aisle, a reduced front yard of eighteen and a quarter feet to Beaumont Street for building two, a reduced rear yard of ten feet to building three in the parking area, a reduced side yard to McGillbury of three feet for the parking and, uh, eighteen point nine feet for building three. In addition, there are three variances, two which relate to reduced parking and one that relates to reduced landscaping that, um, warrant additional explanation. So there are two variances for reduced parking with the first one accounting only for phase one of the development, while the second one accounts for the full buildout of the site. Multifamily developments in mature neighborhoods require a parking ratio of one stall per dwelling unit, while affordable units require a parking ratio of zero point fifteen stalls per dwelling unit. At the time of this application, the applicant was unsure of the specific number of affordable units being provided and could not provide the the confirmation, meaning the zero point fifteen parking stall ratio was not taken into account and all units were treated as market-based, uh, and therefore required a a one-to-one ratio with this application. The administration has been in conversation with the applicant and understands that the applicant does intend to meet the zoning bylaw requirement requirements for parking stalls once they know their number of affordable units. But for this reason, the administration, uh, in conversation with the applicant in this case, has recommended rejection of the parking variances. Regarding the landscaping variance, similarly, there was not enough information available at the time of application to confirm that the street edge landscaping is being met, although the applicant has explained that they intend to comply with the zoning bylaw. There is existing street edge landscaping that the applicant has indicated they will be preserving, but the details of that existing street edge landscaping were not available at the time of the application. Uh, I mean, the zoning analysis was not able to to take that into account, which therefore triggered the 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 variance. The applicant, in this case, has also noted that they'll be providing that information in follow-up, ensuring compliance with the zoning bylaw. So all the variances except for the parking in the street edge are recommended for approval by the administration. And the administration understands that it is the applicant's intent to fully comply with with the zoning bylaw and and the the variances that have been specified. The last thing I'll note is that a zoning agreement and a servicing agreement are also recommended with this proposal. The zoning agreement requires plan approval to the city city center community committee, a height cap of seventy-five feet. There are several water servicing related conditions that are present on the existing caveats for the properties. There is a requirement to maintain a retaining wall adjacent to the northern property limit of the land, a requirement to maintain the four-foot wide landscape. A requirement to maintain the four foot wide landscape buffer zone along the northern property limit of the land from Beaumont Street to the western limit of Burgundy Crescent. And that no vehicle approach for ingress or egress to the land shall be constructed from or to Burgundy Crescent. Uh there's also the the recommended servicing agreement with the details covered in the in the A C G, which is uh uh Schedule D of this report. So with that in mind, the urban planning and design division has recommended approval of the proposal because it complies with the policies of C C D S two point zero and our Winnipeg twenty forty five. And uh with the exception, of course, of the the three variances that I that I noted. Uh that concludes my summary and happy to answer any questions.
Well, just to clarify, some D, three D, three D, um insufficient street edge landscaping. Um so because it's crossed off, that means no, you have to do sufficient street edge landscaping, is that correct?
That's right, and then the the way that the applicant has has explained it is. Yeah, so they're they're cool with it, they need it, they just need to submit that additional information. And if for whatever reason they they couldn't provide that information, they would be required to to provide landscaping.
Um no, I saw, oh, there one question that I didn't see in here, well, not question I didn't see in here, obviously. Uh and I think I warned them that I'd be coming to mention this comment. Beaumont is an interesting neighborhood. And there's the traffic on Beaumont, that's with Fulton Grove, where everything else is coming through that neighborhood. Having a a left, a left out only. So when they come out of the development, going straight to McGillbury, not going all the way down to Windermere and back out. Right out, thank you, yeah, I I get a little cues from the audience here, uh right out of them, like uh. So uh when you, when you leave the property, I'm right out to McGillbury, don't, no go left.
You wanna have that as a condition of this?
Right.
Yes, I uh absolutely, I might just need to have a quick conversation with the the land development engineer because I believe that would have to be, well, it might go in the zoning agreement, but typically, I think that would go in the servicing agreement because there'd be signage uh required both offsite as well as I think zoning agreement condition requiring it to main, to be uh maintained, right, on the site. So if I can take uh five to ten minutes just to to have a quick conversation with uh my colleague Kevin.
Sure, yeah, I intend to put that in there, uh right out only, so talk to him about that, but that's my intent, I'll ask the developer as well. I've mentioned it before uh to them, so uh otherwise, no requests. They're going to McGillbury. Well, they're going to Beaumont, Beaumont Street would take it right by the school. Uh we'd do a lot, it would push a lot of traffic back into Beaumont, then up Windermere, where that horrible intersection is on Windermere and Portage. Uh so I want them taking, instead of going that, go out to McGillbury, go up to McGillbury, where there'll be a signalized light. And then they go to Portage and get that done. It's right in the corner, so it's it's rather than driving through the neighborhood out, just take a little counterintuitive move uh to just go right to McGillbury, lights are there. I think they generally will because the lights are there and Windermere is so brutal. So I I, but again, I'll ask the developer. They're gonna be, part of this plan, it's part of the Fulton Grove and this uh development requires, I I was, it was a change in policy, I don't sure what happened. So McGillbury will, there will be a signaling intersection there, uh which will be really good for a lot of reasons. And it's, yeah, with a whole armada of school crossing guards trying to not get schmucked.
Okay, any further questions?
Okay, enough, now we'll have the applicant Jackie Wilkie speak on the project, you'll have five minutes to present.
We have a number of us who are going to be presenting different aspects of the uh presentation. I'll begin uh with our presentation, we also have the architect uh to discuss the building and um. We just wanna be five minutes total, we would like to be five minutes each.
You can save your time, but if you're ready to go, it does save you.
If you guys wanna come up, you can.
Well, these are, okay, excellent.
Okay, all I had you was a four information. Yeah, I'm pretty sure that they were registered yesterday, but that's okay. All right. So, thank you for um having, coming back and having this special meeting before the end of session, we really appreciate this, thank you. So we are looking at the subdivision of rezoning and variances for uh thirteen uh twenty one thirteen twenty five uh Beaumont. Uh looking at our surrounding uses, uh immediately adjacent to the west is the cemetery. To the south is a parcel of land that is is P R before we get to the McGillbury right of way. Uh to the east is single family and to the north is single family. We are also um uh within eight hundred meters of a uh rapid transit uh line and uh also um Pembina Highway which has frequent transit service. The lot right now is two lots that we wish to uh consolidate and rezone to R M U, uh this is our current plan that you can see. The uh phase one, uh our application was uh to keep the existing um townhouses for the majority of the site and add in a new multifamily site to the southeast corner of the development uh and add additional parking along uh the south uh property line adjacent to the P R area. Excuse me, my apologies. Many of the variances are due to the fact that we are keeping the existing uh units until uh future phases of development. In the long term uh uh development, we are looking at, as noted, four phases uh with buildings uh building two facing out uh towards Beaumont, uh building three along the cemetery and building four in the center, but with the north-south orientation. Uh these, um this change in orientation came from our initial public engagement where we had uh more units looking out to the north, but we wanted to reduce the amount of overlook uh from the balconies to the residential. Uh now the closest residential is across the street on Beaumont itself, so we're separated by uh the road, the full road width right away. Um I'm gonna come back to the architectural with Trent so that he can discuss the um physical uh features of the of the buildings. Uh from our um for our variances, we're in agreement with uh the public service to not have the variances for insufficient street edge or parking uh parking spaces. The intent is that we will meet the requirements for phase one most definitely. And then in the future, as uh development comes in, we will meet the requirements based on the mix of unit types uh that we will have on site. SAM management will discuss uh the uh affordability uh of units and their uh history uh in the city of Winnipeg with this as well. Uh as for the street edge landscaping, we actually do have sufficient street edge landscaping for the building that we had. Uh but we also have a lot of existing trees that are remaining, but we do not have a full um uh report on every single tree size, so we had estimated them all at the minimum. Um and with the minimum, we more than exceeded what we were required, but because we did not state what each and every tree was, we were not able to uh gain that uh requirement within the zoning bylaw. Um so with our variances, this just sort of maps out where the variances are for phase one. You can see here, the only one that we're looking at uh right now is, or the only two that we're looking at right now is the separation between the buildings that are, the existing building that's staying and the uh distance to the parking, um the existing parking uh along Beaumont. So it's not changing from the existing condition, we are not removing any existing trees. Uh and then for future build out, the um variances are for the separation uh from the uh cemetery side, we're looking at a reduced uh yard on that side, uh main floor. What we're looking at right now is parking facing out towards that direction, but having the building uh on that side. And then as well, uh the distance to um the north, we're more than the four feet that is uh in the zoning by law or the zoning agreement right now, we're looking to expand that to uh 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 between eight and ten feet depending on where it sits once we get to that stage. Uh so that we have uh more than what is required, or more than what's required in the zoning uh agreement right now to improve the separation and to add additional planting to that side. Um just taking a look at phase one, so this is uh from our two uh rounds of public engagement. Uh we came up with an alternate plan from what we had submitted to add additional parking for phase one. So adding parking uh along the area of the um existing daycare, when it gets torn down, we'll be able to add existing parking in that space. And the daycare will be sitting in the building uh here and adding additional parking uh to the west of uh the phase one building so that we are meeting our requirements on that one. And then in the full build out, um uh ensuring that we have sufficient parking by adding parking underneath buildings as well as having the onsite parking. And that's my time, and next will be Trent to talk about buildings.
So this was a a, an interesting project because we have um a lot of existing additions to work around on there. And um the client came to us saying they wanted to get a full lot and would provide enough affordable housing so we can grease the market because it's a definite demand right now. And uh the first phase of which felt most likely need to be on this facing McGillbury with a higher density at at seven stories. As Jackie mentioned, we are concerned about, the neighborhood was concerned about how much of a a presence that'll have in the existing neighborhood with single and two-story buildings there. So we listened to them, um. And we, what we've done, you can kind of see there, we're stepping down as we go to the north. We took, we originally had everything facing east-west with uh bookends on the facing north-south, creating a courtyard. But by listening to the the neighbors, they were concerned about the height, especially to the north. And so we, what we did is we stepped down, um I believe we're a hundred and twenty-five feet already away from north property line and now we're even terracing from four, from seven to four stories as we go north. And that reduced our shadow um on that, shadow on the north side. And if there is shadow, it looked as if it would, I don't know if we have a side on that, but it, but it it basically the the backyards of the neighbors, not the buildings themselves, it's the backyards with that shadow in the worst case scenario. We looked at doing, um and go back to the rendering, um we're looking at doing some dirt, um low maintenance material, putting in um some metal cladding and some masonry at the lower level and some fibers and siding um to just to have some permanence and be a a low maintenance building uh and try to for this by following. And by having the daycare and commercial space in there, it becomes integrated part of the community. The existing um daycare is already there and it's just gonna be expanding the facilities there. So we're just trying to have a welcome presence in the community uh with the density that would to meet the market demand.
Yeah, okay, go. Go over here, sorry, um so firstly, uh for those of you who don't know uh what SAM management is, uh so SAM management has uh owns some property, this is one of them, uh and uh we have a management company and we have a registered charity. Uh we are closing in on fifty-five years, Saint Sam is for Saint Andrews Management from Saint Andrews Church, who started it uh that long ago. And outside of Manitoba Housing, we are the largest manager of social housing uh in the province. And uh we uh we take that uh seriously. The the project here is um going to add to our capability to serve our target market. Beaumont as it stands now with townhomes, uh it's starting to be at the end of its, it's well, well into getting to the end of its economic life. Uh we've had engineers uh through there and, you know, while things can keep running for, you know, maybe another decade, the project will soon have to close its doors and thus reducing uh the residents that we serve and the community that we serve, uh we need affordable uh places to live. Uh this project is is uh, I think as indicated before, well-integrated and planned uh to minimize impact of existing tenants. Vacancies are already occurring where building one is going to go and that's increasing as the buildings become more obsolete. Um so uh, then we we thought a lot about, and we've taken a lot of the data for what we need, some of the parking, et cetera, from our existing portfolio, who we're very familiar with. Well, affordable housing and the differences in parking between market rents and and the uh, the number of cars that you'll see at uh properties which can be, um I, we we have as low as uh three uh, three parking spots in a sixty-eight unit building uh where we're ideally affordable housing, so we're very comfortable with anything that's more.
Yeah, I'm I'm just here to answer questions more, so.
I am good, thank you.
Okay, so that's, that's all we have for registered in support, just checking the gallery if there's anyone else who wishes to speak in support, no? Can we move on to in opposition, we have no one registered on file, again to the gallery, no? And lastly, for information, uh we had Trent Piazoni, but I believe we've cracked that, corrected that for for support. So just for information, if there's anyone in the gallery, no, okay. And just if you have any questions on the public service now, counselors.
Yeah, I just, um, um, Public Works does have concerns with the 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 right only access from the site uh and are concerned that it will, there's there's more access points from the site and forcing all traffic to go to McGillbury will limit the availability of the neighborhood uh for, you know, children trying to attend school, what have you. Uh so they have just expressed that they would be a little bit concerned with this. With that in mind.
Taking that advice, thank you very much.
And with that in mind, I I prepared a condition that we can put in the zoning agreement. Read it for you now and then send it to see if you're comfortable with it. So it would be in the zoning agreement, condition nine, a Roman numeral I X, that uh in quotes, that the owner must install and maintain right turn only signs on their property at all of the access points to Beaumont Street to the satisfaction of the director of planning, property and development.
Yeah, I'm not sure why Public Works would have a third party, take a traffic sign out.
If you, if the sign, so if it's going to be on public property, then it would need to be in a servicing agreement and then it would be, I believe, the city's responsibility. If it's going to be on uh private property.
Yeah, no, it should be on public property.
On public property, not on the service agreement thing. Okay, um in that case.
You'll be able to come back up.
I'll just uh, uh I just need the assistance of the land development engineer to put that into the service.
Would you be back, because I think the the applicant wants to come back up now, because we got a question. Not really, no, I I'm pretty, I, yeah, I just, yeah, no, I'll explain why I don't need to see the final approval. Okay, so let's have the applicant come.
Right now, the record hasn't been made up in the final year.
You're gonna need that, no final approval? Yeah, absolutely.
No, we just have the land engineer entering this meeting.
Sure, I'm I'm open, I, I could be wrong.
He's just, he's not, he just taking, just needs a couple more seconds.
Hello, uh, City Center.
Don't doubt you've been following along, so go ahead.
Um, I'm actually, sorry, I just finished talking to uh Public Works Traffic Engineer about this. Um, if you could uh just quickly bring me up to speed with the last three minutes.
Absolutely. Uh well, the the uh, not to put words in your mouth, but as I understand it, the area councillor has explained that they um want the right only uh as a as a condition of this approval, uh or the right right only on exit of the property. And they would prefer on public land, not on private land, meaning that it should go in the servicing agreement rather than the zoning agreement at this point. Um, the 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 committee is aware of Public Works' concerns with the uh with the proposal, but um is taking it under advisement. And I think that summarizes uh.
Yeah, so um Public Works highlighted a couple of concerns with this. Um any traffic uh from this development that that's attending the school would need to turn right out of the development onto McGilvery. Head up McGilvery, turn left across onto Pembina, head up Pembina. You'd be adding a significant uh detour for traffic to pick kids up at school and drop them off um in which would uh put a fair bit of uh concern about the enforceability of it. Um, just based on the amount of inconvenience you'd be entering into the equation. Um so Public Works would suggest uh having at least one approach allowing the left turn to uh enter into the community to access the schools and the parks.
No, we're talking on Beaumont. So what you, I understand what you're saying. So when you come out, there is, ah gosh, a school there, which is like a block away. Um, a block and a half, two blocks max, this is small, or Victoria Community Center, I guess, if they leave. Yeah, so that'd be, those are the last thing they're referring to, the school, which is pretty close. Um and then Victoria Community Center, which is a little bit farther. But really, if you're driving. While you're driving, I don't know. Um but that's just my. Especially because we're looking at affordable housing in there where they don't have cars. We're a point two four. So there won't be a lot of car generally.
Have a sign of no laptop on private property, just.
You know, it should be public property.
Yes.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. I I understand, uh but I I did hear from the applicant as well. So they, they they very intimately know this neighborhood as well, so we'll hear from them as well, so. But thank you very much.
Uh if there's nothing further.
No, no.
It's okay. I think I've got the answer. The big questions. So um for the right turnout uh from the site.
Yes.
Um generally, that wouldn't be an issue for the south approach uh in that we would be almost directly at McGilvery. Um we, but again, it's directly across the street, so it would be their right turn or going straight on that one, which means that more traffic is gonna be going down a residential street.
What do you mean going down?
River. That's a river or something or other.
Yeah.
Sorry, I I keep wanting to say river view and that's not the right word.
So you go across Beaumont and keep going straight?
Yes.
That goes nowhere.
No, it does. It has an exit out that goes to the north uh partway down and then.
That's a transformer place?
Uh but just before the transformer, you can actually cut up and then go on to the next side street to get out to Pembina or you can come back and do a U E and come back up again. So basically, all we're do, you would be doing. And from the north one, anyone turned, being forced to turn right is gonna make that left and hold up traffic going down that side street as well to come back around the block and go back north on.
All right.
Beaumont. So that's my only concern, our only concern on this one.
So that's fair. So you're.
We'd like to keep the traffic on the main, the the more main street that is Beaumont versus trying, versus having it go off on the side streets.
Okay, I think I do think generally you're gonna go, I really don't.
Most of them will be go, from our traffic understanding, will be going to McGilvery.
Yeah.
That is why we're being assessed the amount that we are for the traffic signals.
That's right. But yeah, no, I never took that into consideration because you're right, they could go straight across. Uh that will really anger that neighborhood.
Yes.
If we push all that traffic instead of going up into.
And it's also unenforceable because you would have to have a cop there all the time.
Well, you know, we need bylaws, we need enforcement, but uh uh no, I think I'm going to rescind that one. Uh I I feel that's a fair, fair enough response. Uh thank you very much for enlightening me. So that I'll take under advisement as well, but I concur with. That's it. So. Yes, sir, ma'am. Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll just do that one amendment. You guys doing it?
Uh it's just, it's on its way.
No, 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 that's, all right, ready to go.
Um, so.
Yeah, I believe we went through that. So now we're just on to the uh, we got the rebuttal portion, so we're just on to the motions. I'm just waiting on the wording and setting it down. Just to make sure we have it correct.
This is mood music for you.
We care, so you're off. No, no, just for that. Let them, let them have their moment.
Okay. Um, this just happens.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like I'm already, I'm already sleeping, so I know it is, yeah.
By smoke, sound crack, so we're getting to the city center.
We're doing that.
This is why we're the best city set, we're the best community committee. We offer music.
Very good. Steal a snack when you're out there for you as well.
Is that the entire thing for context still that I highlighted in red is where the the change to the zoning agreement language would be?
Ah, sorry, it's not coming up for it online.
Oh.
I'll read it, you guys read it into when I get there.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, so we'll begin with the questions.
Uh on number four, uh this is a subdivision re-zoning. I report when the public service is taken as read. Uh received public rotation be included. Oh. So we do an amending motion here, though. This is gonna make, this in the, then it wouldn't be for to executive policy committee.
Okay, that's true. Well.
I think we probably wanna get this shoved on the ground faster, so plan approval be quick. All right.
Give up time, thanks for tomorrow.
Mind you, this would go tomorrow and then on to the eighth, so. Right? Like it's, like you're not really.
Well, we gotta figure out.
We can.
Plan approval or no plan approval?
We can do, we can do the motion and then we can do something. That's sequenced in a way. We're pretty sure we can do something.
That's right, critically, critically. Go ahead.
I might also just add that based on where we are in the in the calendar and with council, they won't be able to conclude their subdivision and rezoning until the autumn. And so, so I think to to your point.
Yeah.
If, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that's fine. Okay, so we'll, we'll do the change for the no plan approval because we want really slow, we'll slow everything down.
Yeah.
All right. Um, so we'll do that amendment. Uh da-da-da-da, that with the recommendation we pay public service be conferred in part and for the standing policy committee on property development by the, yeah, period. No, that's fine. And then so the in part is the uh will be the amending motion that doesn't connect for plan group.
All right. Okay, ready to discussion?
Oh, we just need the amendment part read out.
Yeah.
Sorry, my email's just behaving rather odd, so I don't have the highlights. Yeah. It's just, it's not giving the highlights that I'm looking for.
Can you just read it? Absolutely.
So, I, yeah, go ahead.
So it would be condition two A uh nine, I'm sorry, two A eight, O V I I I. So that is the plan approval. And then at the very bottom of that condition, after condition G, which is freestanding signage, it then says on the owner's land, works to the city for approval by the Director of Planning, Property and Development, the director. And then the part that you'd be striking is, and the city center community committee.
I can add him.
That's right. And then the rest of uh the the condition language would stay the same, so it's just that one.
Yeah.
So it's very helpful.
Very supporting reasons. Um I uh first want to recommend the uh developer. I always make sure it can bend developers when they reach out to do an incredible job with the neighborhood. Um this did not start off this way. Uh when the development first came forward to the neighborhood, uh there was a fair number called to the office. Um but again, that's why I do believe in public hearings and why I do believe we should talk to the residents. They saw that, yeah, facing the street where all the houses were, maybe not the best idea. So they spun the houses, uh they spun the buildings sideways. Fantastic right there. Um they dealt with a parking issue. We may have to come back later on with that, but again, it is a close to a bus rapid transit uh station. Uh the fact that SAM Realty is incredible in their ability to uh do uh supportive housing. Um, I'll admit it, it's sad. This, like I was telling them, it's sad to see this little jewel gone, but it is getting old. Uh but it's, it was always my last door-knocking spot. I'd always go to this one because it just made me chuckle. Other, there's little four plexus, like little forest things around. They all have little, it's really cute. Um but it just got tired. Uh I understand. That's been around for quite a long time. But provided a real nice home for a lot of people. Um this will provide more homes. It's facing McGilvery. A lot of this development facing McGilvery, which is where we really do wanna see this kind of development going. Um high-quality design, uh they got the green space, they've listened to my whining about uh uh trees and everything like that quite well. Um we did look at the the traffic flow and I have been convinced that uh we will leave it as is. The traffic will naturally, when, as they mentioned, there will be legs going in, will naturally go out that way. I do advise people not to drive their kids to school, um it's two blocks away. Um and hopefully Victoria will become a a very active community center in the future, but we're not sure when that'll, that'll take. Um, so for those reasons, um and many more, uh I'm I'm quite supportive of this development.
Thanks, thank you, brother. Really encouraging. So my council are always, always a neighbor.
Hi. The public here, the public here would respect this application be concluded?
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, please note that the committee has made a recommendation on this matter that will now proceed to council. No further representations are permitted on the subdivision re-zoning. All persons registered for the public hearing will will receive notice on when the matter is to be considered by council.
Moving on to the variances. I report when the public service be taken as read. Received a public presentation be included. And in co, so in accordance with subsection two four seven three of City Boarding Charter, the variance is consistent with plan Winnipeg and any applicable secondary plan. B does not create substantial adverse effects on the many's use, safety, convenience of adjoining property adjacent area, including areas separate from the property by a street or waterway. C is a minimum modification of the uh zoning bylaws required to relieve the interest effect of the zoning bylaw on the applicant's property and D is compatible with the area in which the property to be affected is situated. Supporting reasons same as before.
All this favor.
Hi. And that the recommendation we pay public service, uh yeah, be concurred in and the variance be approved, right? Yeah. Right, because they're not close to other ones. All right. That the public here would respect this application be included. And then move to adjourn.
Oh, sorry. Uh just please, sorry, just need to bridge this decision. Uh please note the committee's decision with respect to this application may be appealed. Did you wish to appeal? Information on how to do so be put in the order issue, which will be mailed to all persons registered.
Which is that. Okay.
Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Council all the call.
Yep.
That was carried unanimously too. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody. Good day.